Those in the room as well as online, if you're here for an item that is on the agenda, we would just wait, ask you to wait for that item to come up and address the council. For an item that is not on the agenda, there will be an are online, just know that we will take comments from individuals in the room first and then we'll go to next item on the agenda is the I don't know that John Schmitz has ever done the pledge of Next item on the agenda is the agenda approval. Jim, do we have?
No changes to the agenda this evening.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
They'll move.
Second.
For Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yep. Yes.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is public communications and we don't one who is with us that would like to make comments to the have anyone in the chambers here on an item that is not on the agenda? One online with us that would like to make comment? Item that is not on the agenda. On to public hearings. We have no hearings this evening. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
They'll move.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Vote please. Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yep. Burkhardt?
Yes.
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Passed. Item on the agenda is the non-consent agenda 7A. Consider the second reading of ordinance number 1058. Ordinance amending the Johnson revised ordinance have to modify locations of stop intersections.
No updates for you this evening. Staff would recommend waiving third reading if council's comfortable to allow us sufficient time to get the signs installed prior to start school year.
For anyone in the audience that would like to address the council? Second reading of ordinance number 1058.
They'll move. Second.
Vote please.
Yes.
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Make a motion to waive third reading of ordinance.
Any discussion? Ready?
Yep.
Yes. Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item 7B. Consider the second reading of ordinance number 1057. Now for approximately 36 R2, PZ case.
No changes to this item. I do want to note, I have amended the comprehensive plan amendment as instructed last time and that's been attached if you wanted to see that. We have received no additional public comments.
Like to address council on this? Second reading of ordinance number 10.
Second.
Second, Cindy vote please.
Yes.
Evans? Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yep.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Item 7C. Consider third and final reading and to adopt and publish ordinance number 1056. After 140 of the city code regarding curb cuts, driveway approaches and drive.
This is the third and final reading. There's been no changes since the second reading. I will note that the full ordinance was put in the council, or excuse me, the staff report for this item, but no, no changes from the last conversation on this.
One in the audience that would like to address? Do we have a motion to approve third and final reading and to adopt and publish ordinance number 10?
Approve.
Second.
Second discussion? Please. Member Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yep.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Yes.
Item 7D. Consider the following items related to PZ case number 2112. The subject property is located 11052 Northwest Drive. Resolution number 21-206, a resolution accepting an irrevocable agreement for annexation into the city of Wildlife Estates. Resolution number 21-207, a resolution approving a development agreement regarding parkland dedication. Life Estates, plat 1. Resolution number 21-208, a resolution accepting a petition and waiver for future improvement. Drive and resolution number 21-209, a resolution approving the by the states plat 1 outside city limits.
Good evening. You guys had approved the preliminary plat for this project earlier this year. This is outside of our city limits, but within our two mile urbanized area, so that is why it's in front of you. They would be developing this consistent with the city subdivision regulations. They have provided an irrevocable annexation agreement, so if in the future there is a need to annex, other properties wanted to annex and they would create an island, that would be the time we would annex them. They would not be accessing any city utilities at this time, therefore they are not requesting any annexation right now. The property would be used for one existing single family home and a new lot for a new existing single family home. This is on our comprehensive plan as an employment area in our Thrive 2040 comprehensive plan. Single family uses typically is not what we're looking for in that area. However, if we take a step back from the look at the uses and look at the lots themselves as being created, those would be of sufficient size that they could be redeveloped with uses as envisioned in our comprehensive plan and therefore staff would recommend that it is consistent with our comprehensive plan for that reason. Otherwise, other than that, it's a fairly minor subdivision, two lots with two outlots, the outlots are tied to the adjoining lots. I do believe we have a representative of the applicant online with us if you have questions, otherwise I'd be happy to go into further detail or answer any questions you may have.
Wait, does this Northwest Row Drive today, does that?
That ends at 141. No, you'd have to access backup Northwest 110th Court, the Northwest Saylorville Drive, and then to get under 141, you'd have to use the ramp.
Looking at the Wildlife Estates. Firmly we're not. Firmly we're not.
They're not proposing to use it as a zoo. There is significant blood plane areas there, so I'm sure there is animals.
Yeah, there's animals in my yard. Okay, that's, that's all.
One in the audience that would like to address council on this? Resolution number 21 dash. Question?
Yes.
Ready?
Yep.
Burkhardt?
Yes. Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion to approve resolution number 21-207.
They'll move.
Second.
Second, discussion?
Yep.
Burkhardt?
Yes. Yes.
Evans? Martin?
Yes.
Resolution number 21-208.
Still moved.
Second, discussion?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Ready? Have a motion to approve resolution number 21-209.
Still moved.
Yes.
Evans? Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yep.
Burkhardt? Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7E. Resolution number 21-211, a resolution approving site plan for Johnston Town Center mixed use building. Oh, one Merle Hay Road, PZ case 21.
Good evening. This will be our first commercial structure within the Johnston Town Center development. For orientation, this would be the building facing Northwest 62nd Avenue at the intersection with Merle Hay Road. It is an approximate 12,000 square foot mixed use building, two stories in height with area for rooftop patio overlooking Merle Hay Road and Northwest 62nd Avenue intersection. No tenants have been publicly identified to date, but it'd likely be a mixture of office users and restaurant users. As part of the Johnston Town Center development, much of the items we would typically address with a site plan have already been addressed. Parking was accounted for all uses within the site and provided they stay consistent with that plan, nothing additional is needed. They are staying consistent with that plan. All of the open space was accommodated with a master, the master site development. All utilities have been installed throughout the site, water, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and stormwater management is also being handled as part of the master site, primarily as underground detention basins with some above ground detention basins on the eastern edge of the property. A main item we would look at here on this site is architecture for the building. And for this particular building, the applicant is proposing to use all class one and class two building materials. And for specifics, they have glass terracotta shingle system, cement panel system and brick masonry cladding. As I had said, those are all class one and class two materials. And as a commercial structure, there is a requirement that 35% of the ground floor be glass and they are exceeding that with 36.7% glass. And as proposed, the site or the building is in compliance with the architectural design guidelines of the town center. Happy to go into further detail as needed, answer any questions. I'm not sure if the applicants, Denise is on the line if you have questions of the applicant's representative.
Council have any questions for either Clayton or the applicant?
I do have a question, Clayton. The only landscape that they're required to install is what's within the perimeter of the red dash line. I guess it would be on that correct? The rest of the landscaping that's shown on the master plan, which would be some street trees, et cetera, are part of the overall landscape plan for the town center.
Yeah, you're correct. They're identifying their foundation landscaping, which is required by the design guidelines. There is some landscaping outside that was identified on the master plan that will get installed with this. We had selected to delay some of that installation to avoid having them disturbed during construction. They're not reflected on this plan set because they are reflected on the master plan set, but those would get installed.
And that, in any of that landscaping and sod, et cetera, is part of the overall operation of the town center and the responsibility of the management of it.
Foundation landscaping, to my knowledge, would be the responsibility of the individual owners.
Right.
But the, but the rest of it would be the Town Center Association.
Is the parking lot that's to the north of the, has been built yet?
Yes, it is all complete. The only parking on the entire site that has not been complete was what would have been the hotel parking lot on the south side of the hotel lot. And then two additional rows are bays of parking in this northeastern corner. Those would likely get installed with either development of the hotel or if we see an office building constructed in this northeastern corner. When? Word correction, when?
So this is envisioned as a restaurant. Is it one restaurant or multiple? Cause I see there's a patio on the upper story and then on the lower level, I guess you don't know that that's a restaurant, but you are putting in, they are proposing grease traps, correct?
They do have grease traps. Cindy, in the architectural elevations, I did have a floor plan they had provided which we can use and I, we can certainly defer, I defer to Denise on if she knows specifics.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here if you can hear me. The, the questions are kind of cutting out. I think the question that, from what I heard, was asking if there were multiple restaurants planned. I don't know that they know the answer to that right now. So I don't, I don't think I can give you a firm answer, but certainly the, the rooftop and the patio both being on that west side of the building were intended as being part of one restaurant, I think is the intent.
On the screen, we have the interior floor plan of how it could lay out with a tenant A being restaurant dining room area and a kitchen space and the tenant A kitchen.
Question I would have. Are you done?
Yes.
So I guess this is for Denise, and looking at kind of the elevations, like some sort of pagoda or part of the top for?
Yes.
That, but it doesn't look like it extends all the way across the top of that. But obviously the sun, you know, at night you'll have the western sun. So how do you, how do they intend to kind of shade that area up?
I, I guess I can't answer that as the, I'm the landscape architect on the project, so that's kind of out of my purview.
The, what we've been told is the rooftop patio will not be in immediate construction. That would come with the identification of the restaurant user. I suspect the restaurant user will, if they, if they had, if they had a desire for that to go, they'd come back with a amendment request. They could use umbrellas, other types of shade structures.
Other questions for Clayton or the applicant? One else in the audience that would like to address council on this item?
Clayton, I would like to pose another question. I'm sorry. And this is apologies for my naivete. Does, do site plans get notification or do neighbors get notification of site plans or that they've been published?
Typically, no.
So no communication has, has transpired with the residence that is most closely to the east of this?
They were notified of the rezoning when the entire site was rezoned and of the initial master development plan of this individual building, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Not, do we have a motion to approve resolution? Dash 211.
Move approval.
Second.
Vote please. Councilmember Evans? Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yep.
Burkhardt?
Yes. Yes.
Item 7F. Consider resolution number 21-21, 21 216. Let's try that. Approving and authorizing execution of amendment number one to the development agreement between the city of Johnston and Ignite Johnson LLC.
Start with a quick project update for you. Ignite has completed demolition on the site and received a grading and are actively bringing dirt to the site. Quite the endeavor to get the buildup of soil there for their building. Probably a couple of months here. With the building construction foundation intended to begin this fall and continue through 2020. Site plan work and design work on the building are continuing active conversations with national and regional track groups trying to determine build house track and build design elements. Rezoning of the project should be moving through planning and zoning sometime next month and becoming council shortly after that. Still awaiting final authorization from the Army Corps of Engineers. Lot area. We believe we're on the right track of that, but there's been initially it was all going to be permitted, permitted as one for the Eddos as well as for the Ignite and the city parking lot property. The Army Corps asked us to bifurcate those two applications, so there's a different public notice time, but Ignite site should be permitted here. That's kind of an important point, in part because of the proposed amendment this evening. So what we're proposing through the resolution is amendment number one to the development agreement with Ignite. It essentially does three things. The first move headline for completion of number first of this year to June 1st of 2022. And that's again accommodating some of those timeline delays. Here just as well as kind of the overall scope of the project is pretty aggressive done by September 1st. The second is an adjustment to the pre-development grant schedule for that grading. It's initially grants, dollars, assuming that had at least dollars worth of grading work. More than that, because kind of the spacing of that grading work, we're going to restructure that. We're proposing to restructure those grants into up to five grant payments. The amount does not change, just the timing of those payments onto the subcontractors. The funds for those grant payments have already been bonded for and are currently in the number three is clarification on the timeline for the grants associated with the sanitary sewer connection, the Ignite land acquisition diligence. It's originally envisioned that the city would be the one, or excuse me, that Ignite would be the one to construct the sanitary sewer line off of Johnston Drive towards the Ignite project. Looks like it might make more sense for the city to construct that as part of the road project. There's already dollars bonded for as part of that previous bond for this and $275,000 allocated for that. So some portion of that $275,000 may instead be used by the city for the construction of that sanitary sewer as opposed to be used by Those are the three proposes, proposals within the amendments. Also today's claims, those initial grant payments have been submitted and reviewed by staff. Got those outlined in the staff report. Happy to be doing questions or answer any other questions.
Good question to have is plans have been moved.
Aggressive date that I've heard from Ignite is still potentially the end of next year. I think project out this fall, but that would be the most aggressive date that I've, that I've heard out there.
Other questions? Must have been today, otherwise I would have mentioned it this morning. Well, it's like they tore up parking lots. There's a big pile of it, so it might be available for
Fire with the school district and see if they need to place
why they'd want it. Question? Any other questions or comments for Adam? Not, do we have a motion to approve resolution number 21 dash?
Move approval.
Second.
Second discussion? Vote please.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes. Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Item 7G. Consider resolution number 1-221 establishing the public hunting areas for the 122 Urban Bow Hunt Program. Lots of 21s in all of it.
Yes, thank you. So this evening I want to introduce Dave Crowell. Most of you may know Dave. He's our GIS coordinator for the city of Johnston. He's also a hunter. And for the last 23 years, I've been managing the bow hunt program, which I Dave, oftentimes is sort of my voice of reason or knowledge about hunting in Johnston, how deer hunt works and all those kinds of things. So Dave has agreed to take over the hunt management this year. So the reports this evening that we're going to take a look at, were prepared by Dave. And really the action today, tonight is to approve the public areas that would be allowed 2021. So I don't know, Dave, if you want to add anything or just, do you have? These are the areas A, B, C, D and E, same map as we've had for quite a number of years, so public areas. The private areas will come to the city quest by private property owners and no area is allowed to hunt until you all.
Governor, again, Jim said, I'm Dave Crowell, working community development department and I've actually participated in the hunt for 12 years now and hopefully very familiar with the program here and I've also hunted in Urbandale as well as for Polk County.
All bow hunting in this area.
But Jim or Dave, I continue to be question in the number. That all from hunting?
Um, no, I think it's, it's from various factors. One thing I'd like to point out is I have reached out to the wildlife biologist, Andy Kellner, who serves on and just to question him a little bit about these numbers. We put these numbers into the report from his report that he compiles each year. And as you'll see there, in the last several years, the numbers seem pretty flat and that's because they actually didn't fly with the helicopter. Have a very narrow window in the spring to fly. Other isn't right or they can't get a pilot. Doesn't happen. They felt like they were very fortunate this year that they were able to fly. And so any information is better than information, no information at all. And so I don't know why it looks as though the numbers are but I suspect that it might just be they weren't able to see the deer, the deer move through the river.
Or backyards.
The greenways, the drainage ways that they go that way and then, and then at night they come into town as well to harvest people's gardens. So I think that part of it is just the snapshot in time, the glimpse that we get, maybe that day just wasn't a good day. Plus we had a lot of snow cover last winter. Also, the deer have suffered with EHD or blue tongue, as it's sometimes referred to, and that ridge, the banks of the creeks and the rivers. Are the propensity is for E by deer population down and so not passed on to humans, but they get bit by this little fly or this midge and then it flies as fairly quickly, they fever.
Where do they go? I've never seen a deer come
They're out there, believe it or not.
Are they?
Back in 2008, we had a lot of them that started to show up in weird places. Order to cool themselves down and they end up deceased in calls to remove them.
Well, we, we remove them. If they're identified, we remove them.
Up to the property owner to dispose of them. But oftentimes public works
Other questions for?
Dave, I do have a question for you. Based on that survey assessment, which, which we would assess is a little more accurate than some of those previous years, that Beaver Creek area does list as that 20 and yet we're still prescribing
And yet we're still prescribing hunting areas near that Beaver Creek. I understand that they kind of migrate even daily in that regard. You feel comfortable with the fact that even though we were aspiring or the urban deer hunt program is aspiring to try to keep deer populations below 30 deer per square mile or reporting via survey at 20 in that area that we should still hunt that area?
Double in as little as every spring when the the does have babies, they have two to three. Doesn't take much time at all if there's no population to rebound. All the things that we don't like. So I mean, although the numbers come back. I don't know how realistic it is. Friend of mine and I happened to drive down 70th and I drove down 62nd. Him on the north side of Pioneer Corteva and me on the south side at the same time. And he counted 20 deer and I counted 17 deer moving in opposite directions at the very same time. So that was well over the 35.
Sure.
For miles. So I I think it ebbs and flows a little bit, but and then the other good thing to note too, is that each urban bow hunter is being asked for to bow hunter survey, which is for the boat. That will help corroborate that DNR is one day field observations. So each time a hunter sits, they're supposed to take notes of what kind of wildlife they see, whether they see pearls, raccoons, coyotes, all the above, wild turkey and report that back to the DNR and that really helps.
Thank you very much.
How long does it take a fawn?
Solid year. If they're an early fawn. Probably the next spring they'll probably.
Um, nine the next.
Here don't have very many natural predators. Coyotes are natural predators, four wheeled cars are predators. So, you know, unchecked, the population will double every three years. And when a when a doe has a fawn, that fawn probably will not leave a mile area of where will have her fawns there as well.
Yeah, learn a lot. Learn a lot about deer.
This is fascinating. Do we provide notice to the on the trails or things like that so that publicly people know that we'll also support that urban hunting?
All there's signs that are displayed. 156 acres care park.
The deer are not capable of reading those at this point, as far as we know.
Doesn't take them long to figure it out though.
That's that's, yeah.
But somehow they always seem to avoid me. So.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, David. That was great. Thanks. We have a motion to approve resolution number 21 dash two 21. Moved.
A second.
Second Cindy vote.
Yes.
Burkhard?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item seven H consider resolution number 21 dash two 15 authorizing execution of property for gateway rede
Again, Cindy has pulled up here the proposed property consistently. Five Mill Hill Road, the purchase agreement is described 2.4 million includes a 10 non refundable down payment for that for the due diligence period. Financing for the purchase of property to an environment testing the city. That property value, which bonds proceeds would be coming from east central urban renewal area. We anticipate possible sometime in November and be able to close prior. Good. We've previously identified in the urban renewal plan. Fire property for redevelopment purposes. Whole plan. We have no specific intentions for property at this point of the concept plan for a kayak launch on the south side of that 10.2 bubble portion and light uses potentially. Property. There are also two non compliant pole signs that exist on the site. Those would be transferred. Preliminary conversation on those signs in the past, but we need some further Also noted in the resolution is that we do typically set and hold a public hearing as part of our property acquisitions. That's Iowa, but it has been our past practice. So we note in the property acquisition. Happy to address any questions.
Add that's happening and I'm looking at that plot for a long time. That's happening. Question I had is why does it take until December 15?
Putting together the financing for the purchase is going to take a while. So we've built in a little bit of a cushion there with December 15. wrapped up by mid November. So could have that financing in place. The appraisal will take about five weeks. Said to do a phase one environmental assessment, which talking with the local company impact seven G, there may be that I imagine that would take.
I would just want to, I want to thank and congratulate. Um, for your help on this.
Adam, as I was out driving.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, as I was out driving around the metro this weekend again on the A one. Full sign down. We could have write a Johnston sign.
The good thing David Woolverdean is not here to hear you say that.
You know, I'm not kidding. I think we could, we could put something really amazing up there and be the attraction of the entire, you know, 80 80 corridor. So
Every other business in our community would be able to have the same type of sword.
It's illegal. It's illegal.
Well, I think that would be that.
This one's grandfathered in. It's only because we don't have one on the interstate. So anyway, just
Really noted. Adam, can I ask a question? And actually it's outside of the the boundaries of this purchased area, but it's the, if you look at kind of the southwest, excuse me, southwest corner forest that backs behind the the fresh market, is that owned by the same owner as the fresh market? And then that small wooded area behind there? That area there, yes.
That property is currently leased by Hy-Vee. It's owned by National Retail Corporation out of Florida. Donating or selling the back half of that property to the city. Asked, if you look at our conceptual site plan for the kayak launch, it sort of sits half on that back part of that property and half on 5055. They are open to selling it at a previous value, which they feels about. I think we could do the kayak launch without that property, but perhaps it'll be a shift in.
Just so I I am clear, we could, we could do the, we could shift the kayak launch to the east a little bit to be entirely contained within the 5055.
Portion or sitting citing for some sort of a brewery or a restaurant that would be adjacent to the kayak launch. Trail. So I think it would be unfortunate if we had to shift it to the east, but we certainly.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I want to think. Think about this. Anything else for Adam?
What is the timetable for the kayak launch?
When's working? But technically the CI, it's in the CIP starting for 2022, July of 22. So if this all comes to fruition as we go through the budget process, that will be one of the discussion items is is how do we get to the point of having the funding available for the kayak launch? Where the difficult things with it is it is going to be above the 700,000, which is limit for these types of projects. So we'll have to, we'll have to look at it as a holistic approach, the project.
Multi-year kind of deal.
And the trust also trust.
That's coming soon too. So the whole tag into this. Whole corridor will develop all at the same time and we'll have a new bridge and kayak launch and yeah, barge out from the confluence of the Des Moines River and Beaver Creek and the whole network will be set up and ready to go. Yeah, where they're working on the bridge at the Des Moines River. Creek the confluence goes into.
Oh, down. Oh, right. Okay.
That goes over the Des Moines River they've been working on. So they basically established a barge there that makes it virtually impossible for canoes or kayaks to go into the Des Moines River and that kind of downstream.
I see where you're saying.
Not safe.
Questions for? None. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 21?
I'll move.
Second.
Second further discussion. Please.
Councilmember Burkhard?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yeah.
Item seven I consider approval of the following items related to busy case 21. Richdale Heights class plat two final plat. The subject property is located between the eastern terminus of Powell Avenue and Northwest 100th Street. Resolution 21 dash 218 a resolution. Management facilities constructed and constructed with Richdale Heights plat two public improvements. Resolution 21 dash 219 a resolution, resolution accepting public easement within part 21 dash six seven of Richdale Heights Outlets and Outlaw D, Richdale Height Outlets. And resolution 21 dash 220 a resolution approving final plat for Richdale Heights plat two.
Good evening again. Timbercrest Homes LLC has submitted this final plat, which would create 25 lots for single family detached homes. Two unbuildable outlots and four public street lots. This would be the completion of Powell Avenue between 106th Street and Northwest 100th Street. And it would include two stub streets to the south, Reiner Street and Bright Street. Those would tie into future plat three and plat four of Richdale Heights. The property is zoned as part of our R160 zoning district. So all uses would be of the single family detached. And the plat is can is consistent with the preliminary plat, which was approved last year, I believe it was. They are currently in the process of finishing up the completion of public improvements out there. I think they have the turn lane on Northwest 100th Street left to complete. They were working on that last week. I don't know the status of that just yet. So acceptance of public improvements would come back to you at a later meeting. So I would be happy to answer any questions, go into further detail as needed. I do not believe we have anyone from the applicant available.
Yes, Clayton, the only thing I would ask is if we're going to be seeing plat after plat. Could we get the overall concept plan as part of the submission? When it comes up, you know?
Yeah. Cindy, did you add on that thing I sent you earlier? Did you not see I sent you something? I emailed you earlier. It it's not on there. I, council member Cope had asked for an overview of where the various plots were, and I provided that him and I asked Cindy to attach that on and like it didn't make it onto the agenda.
Yeah, it would. It's helpful. It took me a while and the two maps submitted, one's going one direction and the other one's going the other direction.
Yeah, and
It's tough. When we don't see them all the time.
Under understood, and I'll make note of that.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I think the engineering firm, which had the road going east, west, and also north, south deserves a little causing that confusion.
Yeah. So the the plat itself is done by Raccoon Valley Land Surveying, which is a land surveyor. And then the second page is the engineer exhibit, which is done by Stubbs Engineering. And that tip, historically, we would have had the all on one document, all that information. But the state licensing board said, no, the engineering stuff has to be on its separate sheet. So that's why you see it the way it is.
It shows to be able to figure out which direction.
So on the screen is kind of a overview of where the various plats are located in relation to one another.
Yeah, the North Arrow on the one is is the wrong direction. I saw that too. And I thought, am I looking at two different locations? Yeah.
You guys both found something that flipped past staff and is being corrected by the by the engineer. Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
And I'm looking at the the top. So this is the plat two and it shows on the south side of Powell Avenue. Six foot trail easement. It's six feet. Isn't that, that's more of a sidewalk, right? Why are they calling it a trail easement?
Five feet are in the public side away, five feet on the property with a one foot buffer from the back of trail to the easement line. So the trail straddling the property line.
It will be a 10 foot.
It's a 10 foot trail, five foot in the public right away, five foot on the private lot within the easement.
That will actually, there will be a trail.
Yes. And that that will get constructed with home construction.
I think that would be the other thing that'd be helpful as well as in putting this whole thing together is we're trail routing through it too. So, because I presume if there's a trail running along this part of the road, those other trails as part of the development.
Yes. I'd be happy to follow up with some additional information to the full council and make sure to include that with future plots moving forward.
Other questions or comments for Clayton? Audience that would like to address.
Second.
Second discussion Cindy vote.
Yes.
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 Pass. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty one dash two nineteen? Go please.
For Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes. Yes.
Resolution number twenty one dash two twenty.
Go please. For Martin.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart.
Yes.
Coke.
Yes.
Evans.
Under item seven J, consider resolution number twenty one dash two twenty two, amending site plans for All Star Concrete.
All Star Concrete is requesting to amend their site plan to expand their outdoor storage area and use recycled asphalt millings as their surfacing. They have purchased an additional area of land from the east adjoining owner that was transferred to this property by plot a survey, which is approved administratively. Typically, we would, uh, address this, uh, expansion and of of this type administratively, uh, since it is pretty minor in nature. However, what rises it to you guys this evening is the request to use recycled asphalt millings. That is not listed as an approved surfacing type except by council. It it'd be under the other category as approved by council. It is a common material we have accepted in outdoor storage areas on other industrial sites along Northwest Beaver Drive. So approving this would be consistent with, uh, past practice. And this has been reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission as well, and they have recommended approval. The one question Planning Commission had was how thick it will be, and they're indicating a six inch, uh, recycled asphalt milling base. Uh, and all of it would be screened and, uh, storage would be restricted to no higher than the top of fence.
So the storage is part of this additional land they bought. Is that correct?
Yes.
And the storage plan has been, uh, already approved, or this is the approval?
This is the approval.
And you and the the way they're screening it is with a fence?
Correct.
There's no landscape at all?
No. In the generally in the northwestern section of the property. It is currently vacant. And it is zoned M two general industrial. So typically, probably felt similar to this. Yeah, the sheet that's up now, the outdoor storage was previously approved in the rear of the building, kind of in that northwest east or northwestern quadrant of the site. And what they're proposing is to relocate that to the east. Reasoning being the applicant says business has just been very successful for them. And they're already seeing an increased need for materials to accommodate their increased business.
Well, this, it's got something like a fifty foot setback from Johnston Drive, and now we're going to see a great big storage yard with a fence around it. I'm no screening at all. Like, who owns this chunk? If you will, uh, scroll. Who owns that chunk of land now that's guard and Johnson Drive?
That's still attached to the property to the east.
It seems kind of, it's too small to build on. It seems like I don't know what they're trying to do here to lessen their, I guess, their cash layout in terms of money.
I believe the thought was that would be area for stormwater management for the eastern site. And so it preserves the low point for that site.
For the next building site. Okay.
And the fence would be, uh, um, opaque, so can't see through it. It's not just a chain link fence.
That fence prescribed around the entire, uh, area? Or just around this additional area?
It'd be around the storage area.
Okay.
I wish there was some more landscaping out of the chain link fence. Had in John Drive.
I believe if the council feels that that is necessary, that's certainly something you could condition. Or you could always table the item, request them to amend it, address these comments and have it brought back to you.
Well, I I agree with Councilman Coke. I think there needs to be landscape along there. And I'm not going to be in favor of, uh, approving this without seeing some significant landscaping along there.
Along the south side?
Along the south side.
I'll make a motion to table. Encouragement that they add.
Is there a particular type of landscaping council would like to see? Are we talking shrubs, trees, evergreens?
Evergreen trees, shrubs, shade trees, mostly evergreen trees. That would be the best screen.
Mostly evergreen. Okay.
What are they doing with the already had approved?
It was largely screened by the building itself. My understanding is they have paved it with concrete. And used as vehicle, like fleet vehicle parking.
Got the idea when we first approved this, but they would not breaking them there.
I do not believe they are. We'll certainly follow up on that and make and verify precisely as being stored on site.
Have a second time at least. Offer something.
Understood.
Have a motion in a sec. Applicant about subject area.
Yeah.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Cindy vote please.
Yep. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Pass. Item seven K, consider approval claims in the amount of one million four hundred and fifty six ninety four cents.
Yes. Yes.
Evans. Martin.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Have comments. Jim?
Yes, I've got a couple of things this evening. First of all, um, just a reminder to the council members that, uh, this Sunday is Sunday in the park, which will be held by the library between the library and the Simpson Barn. And that's a joint effort between the Johnston and the school district is sort of a welcome back school for students and and, uh, many of you signed up to serve ice cream at the event, and I know a schedule has gone out, but I just want to remind you. Six o'clock to eight o'clock on Sunday evening by the library. Staff, a couple of weeks ago, met with MediaCom, and I just wanted to share some information that the purpose of the meeting was really to get together, try to determine who we should be talking to at MediaCom when we have issues related to, um, construction and and maintenance from their their folks. Matt Greiner and I met with them. The part most probably the most important things we did at the meeting was to get the the actual contacts of who we should be contacting related to that. One of the other issues we talked about was signage on their trucks, as we're all aware, MediaCom, or excuse me, MetroNet has required to have signage on their trucks. And a lot of times there's been confusion on whether MetroNet or MediaCom or CenturyLink is working in a particular neighborhood. And so we've requested that they have signs on the truck, one one on their trucks. And one thing they mentioned to us, they have a new subcontractor that's going to be involved in the construction or or maintenance of their facilities. And so they, that was one of the recommendations or, um, I think, um, requirements that they have signage on their trucks. So when people see them working in the area, we have a contact or know who to contact related to that. We've had some issues as well as, um, MediaCom doing locates. They didn't indicate to us that they do do locates for of their facilities when, uh, construction projects are are in the area and, um, uh, and so we just reiterated to them is that we hit a lot of their facilities and want to make sure that they are doing the locates. Because if we hit their facilities, it impacts their customers and our residents. And so we're trying to get a little more, um, cooperation on that issue. We did share with them the survey results. As you recall, we did the broadband survey, and there was some information on both MediaCom and CenturyLink and other providers that we did share that with them. We felt it was important for them to understand or know what our citizens are thinking about the service that they have within our communities. So we shared that information with them. We shared information regarding, uh, what we learned from the survey is that we do have some right of way congestion that's occurring, and so that we're going to have some conversation and how we can improve and, uh, honor on some of the congestion we're having in the right of way. And, uh, so, and we also talked with them about, um, our concern about the service, the speed of service and and the customer satisfaction, which was all a part of the the survey that they had, that we had completed on the broadband and just shared our concerns with that. So, uh, all in all, it was a good meeting. We, we, you know, at least got the contacts. We sat across the table from the folks we should be talking to when we, um, are dealing with MediaCom. And so, um, uh, just wanted to pass that information on. We did have a follow up meeting with them as a result of the the survey that we had done. Any questions on that? Got an email this afternoon from Des Moines Water Works, and they're going to host, uh, this fall, they call it the Citizens Water Academy. And it's a series of four sessions, a total of sixteen hours where, uh, citizens can sign up and learn more about water works, about their operation, about how they manage and and treat water within the, um, for the Des Moines system. I didn't know. It it's quite a commitment. It's about sixteen hours over four dates, uh, in October and November. Uh, I believe it was mainly on Thursday evenings. And so, uh, I, if the council wants me to share that information, I I'd be happy to support that in that information if you're interested or, you know, if I can just send it to all of you if you want me to, but it it provides a some good background for not only council members, but as citizens that are interested in water service and how our water service is provided in central Iowa. Okay. And then one other thing I just wanted to mention, there obviously there's a lot of, um, uh, press right now over COVID and the variants that are happening with, uh, COVID at this point. Uh, there was a, uh, CDC has, uh, has said that, um, Iowa is, or excuse me, Polk County is one of high transmission areas uh, within the state of Iowa. There's several counties in the state that are considered that. So we're closely monitoring guidance from the CDC, guidance from Polk County, and, um, if there's any guidance from the Department of Health to determine what our next steps are going to be related to, um, our employees and and addressing that. So I just want you all to be aware. We're watching that. We don't have any final decisions. Obviously, we put the panels up to tonight. Uh, it's just some additional, um, peace of mind for council members because we don't really have the opportunity as we have our public meetings, um, to socially distance up at the dais. So, uh, we will continue to monitor that and we'll, we'll be sure the council's aware of any actions that we're going to take to address where we are or where it appears we're going right now with, um, uh, the Delta variant of the of COVID. And that's all I had. Does anybody else have anything this evening?
A quick update on the town center. Uh, Ripples has been fully installed now, um, so all of the scales have been put in place. We have one light, uh, that needs work. At fixed hopefully here later this week, but it looks lovely out there. Lots of kids using the splash pad. The fence around the, uh, training residential property is also going in, uh, starting today, so that should be wrapping up towards the end of the week. Bureau list, uh, James Navarro. As soon as he wraps up some work at the Iowa State Fair, uh, so we're starting some painting here shortly. As far as the grand opening event, so we've had a few marketing, uh, pieces start to go out on that. Uh, we still have several hundred or I think a couple hundred tickets available here at City Hall for Johnston residents. Uh, also working to make sure that any staff and elected officials want tickets or or meet. Well, there's a lot of equipment showing up, um, for the town center operations, so working to get a lot of that installed. Uh, it's getting delivered here to City Hall. Putting that into action and, uh, using platable and some other pieces. A couple of staff members did meet with the school district as well, uh, and they are going to allow us to use, uh, lots here. Feeling good that we've got lots of good, uh, parking options available for residents. There. So, yeah, that's, uh, that's about it. The the event schedule is still pretty consistent with what we previously discussed. Uh, we're going to meet with the fireworks group, uh, I believe it is tomorrow, uh, to delineate their space. Uh, but we'll kick things off at three P M. With, uh, some slated activities in the splash pad and city hall tours. Performances and a couple ribbon cuttings. Seven P M opener with Jason and then Matty at eight thirty. Bapping things up, uh, about ten o'clock fireworks and hopefully have a great day.
Evans.
Uh, nothing, thanks.
I passed. Um, I circulated to the members of the council the additional information on the League of Cities annual meeting.
Any council members want to attend the League of Cities meeting? We do have training funds within the budget, so we'll pay for your registration and and accommodations there. So I I assume you're paid for insurance on the board, Tom, or? Okay. If not, come see me.
Well, I am almost celebrating, uh, one month of being seated on the council. And, uh, I'm still and will forever be humbled and honored to be in this position. However, I also feel it's important to at least delineate a couple of the things I've learned in this last month. And, uh, I start with learning how incredibly hardworking the city staff are. Thank you for all you do for all of us. You are amazing folks. You are incredibly responsive. And even if you don't live within the city limits, you you treat the city as if it is your own, and we are so valuably, uh, indebted to you for that. I also have learned that there are citizens who love the city almost, and maybe in some cases more than I do, which I didn't think was possible. I've learned that the public safety officials not only act with great integrity and professionalism, but are fervently committed to making sure that we protect the safety of all of Johnston residents. I've also learned that there are some within our city, however, who question, especially in light of recent events, whether they truly are safe within our community. I've learned a lot about free speech. I'm so grateful that I have that right right now, that I've always held it, and I pray that we always will. I understand and have learned, however, that there are certain types of speech that can't be touched. I've learned that there are certain types of signs within our city ordinances that can't be touched. In fact, we're even updating some things regardless of whether it states one position or another that needs to be addressed with regard to signs and with regard to a whole bunch of other ordinances within our city. I look forward to seeing and hearing that discussion as things move forward. I've learned that orphan shoes and crackers and trash aren't welcome at the splash pad, and rightfully so. But please claim those shoes if they haven't been claimed. I've also learned more about sidewalks than I have before, and as of tonight, I've learned a far heck of a lot more about deer than I ever knew before. But I also learned that this is a time for us, and when we're given the opportunity to stand up for hate, against hate, excuse me, we need to do so. And so tonight I go. And so tonight I go on public record is indicating that I condemn. The language that is expressed within the sign at the boathouse. I find it disappointing. I find it discouraging and disparaging. I find it hateful. And while I also celebrate that it is free for that person to post those types of sentiments. I don't find them constructive in the least as to what we're trying to do to aspire a positive and strong community. Of all of our citizens of all ages. I don't think. In fact, I don't feel like this is in the best interest of our city. And while I would love to hear discussion from more of my council members, I would propose that we publicly all state. In some sort of resolution that we don't support this type of language. And so with that, I pray that I continue to learn as much as I have in that last month. But also that we all continue to learn ways that we can stand up to hatred and disparaging comments. So that we may in fact be more productive members of society, but that we also may be models for others to do the same.
Well, I, I appreciate everything you said, Councilmember Burkhart. And if you come to, I will just follow up and say, if you present a resolution with the language that you're just. You have expressed here, I probably will be. Mine doesn't sound nearly as important as Councilwoman Burkhart's comments. My comments are, could I? Matt, would you do me a favor? I've been getting lots and lots of comments on pickleball, pickleball courts. And people are calling me up and sending me emails. So can you give me an idea in inventory of how many courts we have? And where you think that we're going to go from here at this date in terms of adding more courts? And you don't have to address it this minute. I mean, if you want to, okay.
Currently we have two courts. They are both found at Crown Point Community Center. Those courts are mainly used by seniors on Tuesdays and Thursdays, pickleball courts, and they are tennis courts Monday, Wednesday and Friday. Outside of those time periods, I'll be honest, I'm at Crown Point all the time and I watch what's happening in the afternoon. I watch what's happening all the way up to almost five o'clock. Those courts aren't used.
By either?
By either.
Okay.
They're empty. So I'm not sure what the desire and where people want to go, but we have empty courts there that are continuously being used. I know Janet has put information out on social media to make sure people are aware that those courts are there. From there, as we continue working with Ignite for the indoor facilities, their large. Complex that will be set up for volleyball and basketball will also be designated and lined and striped to allow pickleball. And pickleball is one that has easily movable net systems that you can move out there and we can get. Ten, fifteen, twenty courts going all at the same, same time once that facility is open. And once again, through our utilization agreement, we'll allow for those things to happen and go to start having tournaments and those types of things at that point. The indoor facilities really tend to work better than outdoor facilities, just because you're climate controlled. You have air conditions, you have heating, you have lack of wind, you have all those things that a lot of pickleball players like to, to have. So. That's kind of where we're at right now. Moving forward in some of our other parks, we'll look for different sites for potential pickleball. The problem with them is they're very single use. Once you start putting concrete pickleball courts on, there's not as many uses for those types of facilities for other purposes as. If you only have a half acre or two acre park, pickleball courts tend to take up a lot of space compared to what the rest of the park is. So. You have to have the right mix of area and space to be able to. Bring those into different neighborhoods.
I appreciate all that and I will talk more with the people that are giving me these emails and phone calls, et cetera.
They are, yeah, more than welcome.
I suspect that it has to do more with a social aspect, that they want multiple groups playing at the same time. And the two courts might be limiting them.
Right now we're just limited space wise for outdoor type area. We are starting to reach out to the middle school. They do have the courts where what used to be the high school tennis courts there. They're not used that much during the day, but they are not striped for pickleball or any other uses. Right now, there's some hesitation of them being completely open to the public. So.
Then my only other comment was I did get some calls about wasting water with our new splash pad. And I explained that they are on call, the, the water jets, et cetera. So if someone doesn't push the button, it doesn't work. If that's, I haven't done it myself, but that's what I understand. And so I just. Perhaps if someone could follow up with me on how many gallons of water the nozzles are using up. I believe I kind of replied back to this person and I said, well, if we'd had to do filtration tanks, it would have cost a half a million dollars. I mean, I might need some talk, talking points, you know, depending on where the drought goes, et cetera. It might be helpful in my discussions about the splash pad with.
Got a couple of things to share, but just real quickly. Thank you. Thank you for sharing how much you learned over the last month. Many of us learned many of the same things during that time period. I think we all completely share your sentiments. I mean, I know that we all share your sentiment. Statements that have been, that. We, I think we've all publicly stated in one form or another. Are working through a process of to try. In the future, minimize, mitigate. Signs like that. Also recognizing that. Positive way figure out. Press it and, and minimize the impact that it has on us. I'm hoping that we can work through that process. Right now we've been experiencing. I would prefer for. I'd rather not kick the dog while it's sleeping. That's, that's my. A couple of things to share. I was invited to a meeting with some management. Management team at D L L, a business that has operated here in Johnston. Over in Berchwood Court, they have three hundred employees. I'd heard of them and had any, you know, had any conversation with anyone. They're a global vendor finance company. Their parent company is in. Iowa facilities are, they are just, you know, excited about being in Johnston. They want to see. Want to see more of their employees move to Johnston. Excited to learn about them and, and. Ever have an opportunity to, you know, engage with them, I would certainly encourage you to. The other thing is that on Saturday, I was part of the. Vigitaries that welcome home the last of our National Guard members that have been overseas now. Wait, look, all of our Iowans back home again. Just wanted to share that as well. So. I don't think I have anything else.
Here since Councilman Burkhart brought up sort of this suggestion. You know, I, I think it's, we've all struggled with how to deal with this issue, but. Councilman Burkhart has made a good. Disagree that we're. Not just that sign, it's also other communication. Pressing hate.
Clarify when I, when I said let's let that sleeping dog lie. Say something about the negative reaction. This is. Don't want, I don't want to encourage. Don't want it to encourage.
Well, I think we're on the verge of. Opposite perspectives from that. I, I just, I disagree that, that this is sort of a calm kind of thing. I think it's, it's, I, I, I think if we just allow this to kind of. I, I, I guess I feel like us adopting a resolution. Labeling this as, as.
Shared my concerns. I have some concern. They're prepared. Anybody else want to comment?
Exactly. And I think that's why, you know, we need to take that in mind, but I, I don't, I believe that we're, we're not taking away. At least, I mean, it's Councilman Burkhart's concept, but it, I've just described it to me, that's just. We're not, all we're saying is going on record. I don't.
And let me just say, man, I think we all have said that.
I disagree. I think what we, but, but the members of our city have heard, what they've told me is, it sounds like you can't do much about it. That's what they've heard. Not that we disagree with it, but that we can't do. So I think it must, we need to make a stronger. I think that's, those are two unfortunate, the challenges, it is, were challenges and what we need to do. That's why I think we need to be. Clear statement to folks who are paying close attention to this, that.
Anything else?